Yeah, it's like a ghost.
What we gonna do Nancy? Start?
Pardon?
What we gonna do now? Start or what?
We can't without three.
No, you rule of necessity.
Pardon?
The rule of necessity. I remember when I first started, there was a case where I said, "I can't, I know the guy." And they said, "Mr. Riley said it's a rule of necessity, so you can start the meeting." You know, I mean, be shorthanded like that. We were only two members that night.
Why don't we just wait a couple of minutes?
At least it wasn't me late this time. I was late at the last meeting.
So we probably should wait, you know, about 10 minutes and then just...
Well, or five. Because they can be technically, say they were denied by us, you know, meeting didn't go as scheduled.
We'll give them a couple of minutes, right?
Yeah.
Time is reasonable.
Yeah, and just say, "In the minutes." Okay, "The minutes of April 14th." Which I wasn't here, you're the only one. No, the last one I was, on April 14th I was.
What is it? What, a rule of necessity?
Yeah.
What does that stipulate?
Stipulates that if you do not, even though you know, like in my case, I didn't know the guy. I mean, I knew the guy and I said, "You wanna be on it?" And they said, "You still can't, because the rule of necessity."
So you can move forward?
Move forward.
What about with just two members?
Yeah, there was only two members that night. That's the whole part, whole point. They didn't have enough people. And as a result, that's...
You can continue with two?
Yeah.
What about with one?
I don't know about that.
Oh, you know.
I'm just gonna call.
Yeah.
If he's forgotten it, that's all.
Get him out of the shower.
Yeah, record it.
Oh.
Usually it's... That's usually... You do that automatically like me.
There are only two matters, haven't there?
What's that?
Two matters.
Yes.
Yes.
Was a plot plan for 1,200 to have a service?
No, they're here tonight.
Would it come to Nancy? I didn't know whether...
Yes.
They would supply that prior to?
Exactly. So we might have to postpone that one. Or make a decision. No?
If they don't, or if they don't come up with a plot plan...
Then I...
You could do any of the three.
Yep, one of that, yeah. Just so everybody knows that we normally should start at 6:30. One member moved, so we're short a member there. And another one had a family obligation, whatever that is, I don't know. So that left one other member and that's what we're waiting for.
He'll be here in five.
Okay. Sorry about that.
You know, if I think of it, I'll give you that copy of that rule of necessity.
Yeah, that would be good. We should have that.
Yeah. See, you can learn more than me.
Absolutely.
I put them in my pocket and I'll do it. I leave it there. I might put it down and look at it another two weeks. That is, uh... I would do it if, you know...
I'm not gonna do it.
It's not a big deal. It's not a big deal. They don't need that often. But should they have a decision at the board, I mean, at the naval station? Then they would have that board's me to make administrative decisions. I have absolutely, normally wouldn't do it, because I'm so fit. That's what that is. It's, uh... It's the Naval Air Station, Benais.
Is that's what, that's what this right here is, right?
Yes. See, here's the interesting thing. This is a dumbass.
Which column? Which column?
Oh.
This is what, this is what you're saying, right?
That's right. Yeah?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a long pause in that tape.
Pardon?
It's gonna be a long pause in the tape. Imagine when they start playing it.
Will they just cut it out?
I hope they do. This is 170.
Yeah, Bill?
Back to Nancy once again. Guess we're even, huh?
Yes, we are.
We're still moving this back to seven o'clock. It being after 6:30, the Vice Chairman, they'll read the first item on the agenda. It's the approval of the minutes.
Move to approve, that's all you have to say.
Yeah, just move...
Move to approve.
Move to approve the minutes of...
Okay.
Of 14 April.
April 14.
Well, approve the meetings for April 14th, 2016, uh, May 12th.
No, just the 14th.
All right, the 14th.
We have a...
My second act.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then this one?
Yes.
Approve the minutes of May 12th, 2016.
Second act.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alrighty. Being after 6:30, please read the first item on the agenda.
Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 12th. Do you think leaving that date there or change it?
Continue.
Well, it's a continuance.
Okay, it's a continue. May 12th, 2016, at 6:50 at Town Offices, 500 Coatesy Way, Abington. On the petition of Angel Simmons, 12,000 Bedford Street, Abington, for a special permit for an open lot storage of transportation vehicles at 12,000, 1200 Bedford Street, under the Abington zoning bylaws, Section 175-21-82. The property is located at the assessors' plan 664 Plot 81 in the highway commercial zone.
Thank you. Good evening.
Our last meeting, we had mentioned that we're gonna remove the buses on the side of the parking lot.
Excuse me, what is your name, sir?
My name is Charles.
Okay.
I'm under... So, we're looking to have free parking space in the back of the childcare facility. When we talked last month, the issue was with the ISO of the sun.
Right.
And we didn't wanna have to build a fence on the side, which was gonna be costly initiative. So, we remove all the buses on the side of the lot. So now, we're gonna be parked on the back of the childcare facility. So we're just looking for free spaces.
So wasn't it over here before?
Yeah, it was right. It was here.
And now you wanna put them here?
In the back. This is Summer Road, this is Bedford. So all the buses were on this side here before.
So let me just see this for a minute.
Now, to the rear of that giant rock that's in the parking lot?
Well, it's even further back.
Okay.
I mean, it's directly in the back of the building.
Okay.
Now, I was understanding, reading the notes here, that there was a plot plan that was requested for tonight's meeting?
Right, well, yeah, I guess our concern, and maybe that's how Charles, right, is mitigating our concern, was that, um, that's an open lot that is really two, um, two pieces of property, shall we say? Or two addresses. Probably owned by the same gentleman, but two addresses. So when we left in May, our concern was, we really didn't know where, like, the side you were renting began and the, you know, whatever it is, 1202 ended, you know, began and ended. So I think what you're proposing with this is to have the buses basically behind the daycare center that you're renting, so they would stay on your property. And you're saying you're, because there was more than three buses there.
Yeah, we remove all the buses.
The ones that weren't working, those ones?
Exactly. So it's just gonna be the ones that are operating.
Do you have a copy of the old map that we had last month? Handy? Just, oh, take a look at that. So, in other words, you were, that's what you were proposing last month?
Yeah, that's what I was proposing last month. Now, pretty much, buses will be just occasionally.
That's a big difference in...
Yeah.
Will they be marked? Will they be marked, or will...
No, yeah, it's just a dirt, it's like a dirt.
Ross, would you wanna look at this?
How many buses are you...
Right by the white...
You're asking to park them now. And how many, you know, like a year from now or two years from now, assuming your business plan works?
The contract we have for it is that additional buses...
That's mine, sir.
Will be... They're just stored, right? They're not operating out of here.
The contract that we have with the adult day healthcare's...
She's in a front, I believe.
At their location.
And the bus line.
Out the back, yeah. That's one with their, he means the egress.
Plus the bus.
I don't know what they've, according to what that shows right there, they put buses 1, 2, 3 right in the back here, that's all. All I'm concerned with, I would be concerned with, if you choose to approve open lot storage in the back, is that the buses are, they're not gonna be operating out of here. They're just gonna be stored, is that what I'm understanding?
They're gonna be stored.
Just storage.
Moving forward, we're gonna be parked at, we have a contract, so...
Once you get a contract with the people that you're gonna be moving, you're gonna leave them on their sites, that kind of thing. So it's open lot storage for here, so all I'm concerned with is the egress isn't blocked. Proximity to the building in that the buses are, you know, separated from the kids in the building.
And that becomes a fence matter, would solve that? That's the concern, is the safety issue there too. That's my concern. And I think I read in the notes that you did discuss fence?
Yeah, but that would decide.
Yeah, that's what was over here.
They go out, they have a backyard, the play.
The kids don't have access to the...
And then what about someone coming and stripping these vehicles and stuff like that?
That's his problem.
What's that?
That's his problem.
Yep.
They rip them off, I don't care. No, that's just...
I know.
No, I care if somebody gets ripped off, it's just, it's not, it's not, I'm concerned with the guys at the back. I'm concerned with the proximity to the kids, egress, and Afar has it.
Yep.
And they're, choose to act on your application.
No.
That's all I would be concerned with.
What would the distance between the building, Afar distance? Because, you know...
I mean, this car's already parked in, right?
Okay.
Doesn't make it right, though?
No, no, I know, but I mean, it's, it's a parking lot right now, so I mean, it's, the distance to the building is probably like, like 500 feet.
Oh, from the building?
Yeah. Because there's a fence, there's already a fence that separates the parking lot from the building.
Well, I think, excuse me. My concern as of last month was that the buses where they were was an eyesore to, to that neighborhood. Even you go further up 18 towards Waymouth where the bus, you know, the school bus depot is. There's a berm and there's landscaping and that sort of thing. And to just honestly give you permission to park them as they were was an uphill battle for you. Having them around the back, I'm okay with. I guess my concern is that if we say, "Yes, you can park them," then can we regulate where they are? You follow me? Because once we give you a special permit for open lot storage at 1200 Bedford Street, then anything you put there, as long as it's on 1200, not 1202 or 1210 or whatever, is in compliance.
Yeah, I mean, our main issue was the back of the east side. One of the biggest issues was the ISO.
Yes, so...
So, I mean, if you drive down Route 18, you're gonna see the buses that are out.
Right.
It's a special permit, so you could condition that in.
Yes, that's us.
Yeah.
So we can, if you're saying three, we could, you have to stick to the three.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't, if he's got space for four or five, if they're in the back, I don't, I don't care. You know, and if your business grows or you have a reason to put a fourth one, for as long as it is not where they've been for the last couple of months, then personally, I don't have a problem with that. So, I mean, I'd be willing to...
Parking out wider than the width of the building, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's...
We just say parking out wider than the width of the building behind. And then he's got, there's a limit to how many he can put behind there.
Right.
And if you wanna make it one row, that, you know, that way we're not stacking double, tripping deep.
Yes, right.
That gives him enough for him to do what he needs to do. Plus, when he gets the okay and his contracts are in, he's gonna move these buses out. Then he might buy another used bus, or two, or three.
Right.
And have them sitting there, waiting to get more new contracts. And then moves those buses down to whatever the facility is that he's going to be servicing, I think is what we're talking about, yes? And then they can't be seen near there, as long as they're protected from the kids, and I'll verify that.
All right, at this point, I'd like to open this to the floor and see if anyone on the, in the audience would like to address anything? Yes, sir?
Yes, it's Andrea. I'd like to approve the...
You're addressing, you're addressing, you're addressing?
Thank you. Close it to, anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm, I'm, Ryan Reed, 26 Allen Road. I just wanna say, the extra rules you're talking about is wanting the buses to stay behind the house and there aren't too many of them that's on the side of the bus.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close it to the floor, bring it back to the table. So I think we might have a solution here, gentlemen, if you'd like to make a...
I'm willing to make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the petition of Angel Simmons for a special permit for open lot storage of transportation vehicles at 1200 Bedford Street, under Abington zoning bylaw, Section 175-21-H2. The property being located assessors' plan 64 Plot 81, highway commercial zone, with the condition that the buses be no wider in, in the rear and no wider than the building.
We have a motion.
Do we have three lots?
One, one row.
One row.
Yep.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Nancy has a letter for you, sir?
That remains, that has to remain with the records. This one.
12,000. Good luck, Charles.
All right, it being a little after 6:40, the Vice Chairman will be reading the petition of Wayne and Kathleen Ward.
The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 9th, 2016, at 6:40 at, at the Town Offices of 500 Whiskey Way, Abington, on the petition of Wayne and Kathleen Ward, 75 Bello Circle, Abington, for a frontage, 20-foot frontage setback variance and 14 rear setback variance. Variants, relief for the building closer than 10 feet to the principal building at 79 Bello Circle. The Abington zoning bylaw, Section 175-29 and 175-26. The property is located assessors' plan 40, plot 76, in an R30 zone.
Before we begin, sir, from the Sewer Department, regarding 79 Bello Circle, the proposal located on assessors' plan 40, plot 76, appear to have no bearing on the sewer system.
I was supposed to have John from Wheatley here today.
Okay. Do we need to call him too?
It's possible, he's still hooked into the seven o'clock.
He's wired, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's used to it.
We have the, this is the map, and basically, I mean, what you gotta do, sir, is make your case.
Okay.
How's that for, keeping it simple?
Making it simple, I wanna put a two-car garage on at the front of the house. It'll be an attached garage.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be approximately 24 feet wide and 30 feet in length. Here in the cul-de-sac. I have two letters from my butters. I know one was mailed in.
Yes.
I have a copy, and I also have one. I have one from the Murphys, and I also have one from the O'Briens.
Are they across the street, or...
They're right here, Murphys, O'Briens.
Okay.
O'Briens and the Murphys. So the main reason for doing this is, being a family of six, I need more room.
I know what that's like.
So I need the two-car garage, and then in the back of the garage, there's gonna be roughly six by 24 feet will be storage for like yard equipment. And then this out here, the existing building, it already has electric and it's fully furnished. So what that was gonna be is kind of my work from home, because I can't really work from home right now with the four kids at home.
So this is the street?
Yep.
Okay.
This is...
And so your house...
The garage would go right on the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
So the house will then be like an...
So the house itself is basically non-conforming...
Very strange.
In, um, in its...
Being a corner lot.
Yeah, in its location on the lot. Just looking at this, um, I'll call it the left rear corner, looks like it's, you know, if that's... you know, if that's 16 feet from border to the corner of the garage, you know, that was constructed, you know, five or six feet, you know, no more than eight feet from the border there.
Correct.
And this is an R30 zone. We don't have any problems with coverage, correct, Marshall?
No, this is a, a Gale v. Gloucester case.
Yeah.
This is a pre-existing, non-conforming in several respects for the main structure. First and foremost, it's an R30 zone, 30,000 feet, and the lot is only 13,462. So, right off the bat there, then we've got a, for lot size, then we've got frontage setbacks, the, the right front is not within the current zoning, the rear left is not within, not to speak of the existing utility shed, left on the rear and on, on the front, is not as well. That doesn't pertain, so, um, there are new, Gale v. Gloucester has changed, they haven't simplified it all that much. In fact, not at all, really, as I looked at it.
It's called the Diedrich.
Unfortunately.
Diedrich.
Not only would this, should you decide to entertain it, require that you have a finding, the, stating the proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood, in addition, you, he would require, uh, three variances, I believe. We would want something for, I'm not looking at what he wrote here, or what was proposing, the left front setback variance of about plus or minus 21 feet.
Yep.
And when I speak the left front, I'm talking of the house, that would be a plus or minus 21 feet, I give it a little extra there, we don't want to be too tight. Right front setback variance of plus or minus three feet. Left rear setback variance of plus or minus 14 feet. This would be to allow for an addition as proposed plan of land for Wayne Ward, blah, blah, 79, proposed by Wheatley dated March 23rd. We would want to go along and state that that was in there. And one other variance, I believe we want to include in there, is that the proposed addition, uh, would be allowed to be within a foot of the existing utility building. You intend to leave that utility building?
Yes.
If possible. And that, I would have to, if this was allowed, we would have to look at the proximity of the two buildings, there will be a, um, an issue with regards to fire protection between the two buildings, so fire can't jump from one to the other. It will speak to certain materials that can be used on the exterior of the structure to prevent fire from jumping from one to another, or to impede the progress of that, to allow for the occupants to get out of the house, um, if in the event there's a fire. But that's something I can deal with, with him, you don't, you guys don't have to worry about that.
Right, all right.
But those would be the, the, I believe, the relief that would be required.
And in regards to that, that would be like putting up fire line, correct?
Um, we'd like, with different types of siding, different types of roofing materials, et cetera, you're not going to get murdered, you're not going to like it, but it's going to be okay.
Yeah, because it is kind of close to the...
We're talking a foot or two, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Actually, I have a, have a question regarding that. In terms of this auxiliary building, where is, where is the entrance on this?
Right in the front, right?
Entrance is right here.
It's here?
There's a door.
And then over here on this side, towards the field, there's French doors, but right now it's storage.
Nope.
But the main entrance is, for the garage or for the existing?
No, for that.
It's right here.
Okay. Well, because sometimes you can, if you connect them, then you don't go, then you don't have...
If you want to connect it, then I'm going to, then that structure will require, it becomes part of the principal structure, and then that becomes subject to, not to 10-foot, you know, which would have been, in this case, not that we're abiding by that.
Right.
Well, front yard would be 35 with that, anyway.
As your foundation.
We would have to, if he wants, if you want to do that, then I would be requiring more relief on the left rear. Assuming we're not going to move the building, we're just going to connect it to the proposed new structure. But that's up to you, if you want to, if you guys want to do that, I can give you rough calculations as to how you want to...
I don't know what we take...
I mean, that's not what he's looking to do.
Yeah, right.
I was just...
Because right now, it's probably 12 by...
I don't think it's a good idea, because I don't know that the existing utility building is for us protected, and I don't want to connect a for us protected building, the new proposed structure, to something that is not.
Right.
Because one's going to move and the other isn't.
Right.
And that could make the applicant sad.
Now, just so you'll know, I'm one that's a stickler for, I, you know, frontage and all of that, and in your case, you're 15 feet from the front. That, it becomes some issue as far as pipes and all that stuff underneath. But I did drive your area twice.
Okay.
I mean, very thoroughly, you probably recognize my car.
I was just there, actually.
If you said it, I would know. I saw a pickup driving down the road.
That was me.
But, and in fact, I think I, you, I went, I was leaving, I saw you drive in, someone with a blue vehicle. But any, my point is, that whole area, to me, is not in R30. It's a much smaller one, and all the houses are on top of each other. I mean, it's not, there's not big gaps with them, there's not much setbacks between buildings or anything. Making it easier for me to get off from where I would normally be, as far as frontage and all of that. And again, that's a concern I have, and in this case, I'm more willing to relax my thinking on this property.
No, this, the only thing that really worried me, because again, I can see where you want the garage, protect your vehicles, and make more room for yourself. Now, there's, there's no living spaces at all in this, this is just a garage.
No, what it will be is, the green, the red spot will be the garage itself, and the blue will be the farmer's porch.
It's going to be a deck, that's nice, that's a nice area for it.
This right now, it's insulated, and it has electric.
Yeah.
But...
That, that concerned me, because it's going to be so close to the building.
There's no...
And was it there when you moved there?
Yes.
All right, so wasn't your responsibility?
No.
So we, it just, it is there.
What that'll be is more like a gym, and like my office.
Yeah, it's a good size, actually, for...
I think it's like 12 by 20.
So the main concern for me with this, and, would be the shed, but as Marshall said, that he's going to be working with you on the fire protection and stuff like that, but, very good.
Just when Dale drew it up, he decided it would be best for the zoning and all that not to be attached, because...
Yeah, it's a, it's a very strange lot, facing the...
Someone thinks like you.
Facing the field and everything, I can see why you'd want to put this here.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, over here...
Yeah, there's nothing you can do.
There's the only place you could do it, like I said, the law is not conforming, in that case, because...
But it's more non-conforming, and that's where that Diedrich, Wade v. Gloucester, now Diedrich threw in there, and so that's why it's even tougher, technically. But in your case, to me, it's not an R30, it's not even an R20. I mean, you're at 13,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So, to me, it's, and the neighborhood would factor into this, it's very similar. So it wouldn't be detrimental, in my opinion, to the neighborhood.
Yeah, there's only one or two people who actually really see it, setback towards the field, so there's no one, no one across the street, no one over here, so...
Yep, so, I don't have... So at this point, I'd like to, um, close it from the table and open it to the floor, see if anyone would like to speak on this matter? Boys?
Boys, you want to speak?
You want to say, you want to share?
All right, they're cool, they're good.
Did you want the...
Well, actually, I'm going to read those into the record in a second, sir, so once I close it to the floor, bring it back. We did receive this on 6 June, um, from Michael and Maureen Murphy. Dear Mr. Mullin, this letter is in regard to the petition of Wayne and Kathleen Ward of 79 Bellows Circle, Abington, requesting a variance for their property. As a butters, we would like to state for the record that we are in favor of the variance being granted. And you have a second one, sir?
Pretty much stating the same thing from the O'Briens.
And this also is from Timothy and Alicia O'Brien. This letter in regard to the petition of Wayne and Kathleen Ward of 79 Bellows Circle, Abington, requesting a variance on their property. As a butters, we would like to state for the record that we are in favor of the variance being granted. And we'll enter those into the record. So at this point, we'll bring it back to the table. As Mr. Shepherd pointed out, you know, it is, the lot's about a third the size it's supposed to be for, for an R30, it's at an odd orientation. You really don't have another location for a garage, and I think, in my opinion, those three factors, um, are, are enough circumstance to, at least in my opinion, go forward with granting the request of variances. I'd say you all. Okay. I have no problem, I'll make a motion. And be sure to add in Marshall's comment that, um, that allow the proposed addition to be allowed within, you know, one or two feet of the other existing structure. Yep.
Variances, one, two, three, um, four.
I'll read them in, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't realize, I just...
Can we grant something that wasn't publicly asked for, though? I don't know if we can grant the fourth. I think it, in this case, what he's talking about is something he just found out today, or yesterday, we, I happened to bring up the Diedrich case with Wade v. Gloucester. And this is, this would then come in, which he did not know about.
Counsel, email me back, and I forwarded off to you guys, man, and not even seen it yet.
So technically...
10 minutes after I got it, I shot it off to you guys, and then went and had something to eat, and...
Yes.
There was discussion with regards to all of this. That doesn't really speak to what Mr. Mullin, the Chair, is speaking to. It does relieve 175-29 dimension, dimensional density and use. We're embellishing that.
Can we do it as, as planned submitted? That's which then factors in that...
I included that.
That we are aware of the...
For, maybe that would be simple, per plan submitted.
Yes.
And then, we'd be covering it, and that covers with the dimensional density.
Yeah, showing it there.
And we don't have to be a specific, um, per plan dated. I think that's probably, Phil, I think that's a good idea.
We were not, um, what, what's the date on that?
23, I think it is, uh, March 23, 16.
The thing is, Wayne, you asked for three reasons, and it's kind of come up, that you perhaps need a four.
Okay.
We can't grant something that hasn't been asked.
But you did ask 175-29 dimensional density and use, and this speaks, this plan speaks to all of that.
Exactly. But I think also if we, if we include in it the, as per plan submitted by, you know, the Russell Wheatley Company, if we're covering our bases, especially since, in this case, there doesn't appear to be any opposition.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Shepherd. I make a proposal that, uh, I just want to make sure I got everything here, okay? That the petition of Wayne, approve the petition of Wayne and Kathleen Ward, 79 Bellows Circle, Abington, Mass, for a 20-foot, uh, front setback variance, in a 14 rear setback variance, and a variance relief for building closer than 10 feet to principal building at 79, uh, Bellows Circles, under Abbotton Zoning Bylaw, is 175-29 and 175-26. This property is located on Sessors Plot, Platte, or, yeah, Platte, it looks like, 40, Plot 76, in the R30 zone, and with the, uh, going by the plans submitted by Russell Wheatley dated March 23rd, 2016, and furthermore, to include the billing inspectors, uh, condition, not condition, but, uh, requirement of one to two feet, um, between the...
That's all, you don't even have to put that in, because that's on the...
Yeah, per plan. Drop that right out, drop that part right out.
Per plan.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
You have a letter from... Hey, you got the best boys in the world, by the way.
Yeah, they're, over there, minding their own business.
Where are the girls?
And they didn't even move.
Yeah.
The girls aren't here.
I'm waiting for them to get out, yeah.
Do you have a taser gun at home or something?
No.
Well, they're good.
So Nancy has a letter for you, sir?
Okay.
Yeah, I gave her some.
So, will that be that, is that a claim with the next step, sorry?
Yeah, it's about two weeks before it's filed with the town clerk. Once it's filed with her, there's a 20-day period. And then you come up to the clerk's office, and she gives you a certified copy, you take that to the registry to record it, and then you can get your building permit from Marshall, you know, apply for it. If you have any questions, you can give them all. Can you define the note, John?
Yeah, that's right.
I saved myself some money.